Council on this day of January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Being that there is a change to the agenda, do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Tisdale, second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote with Nathan and Glavin out of the room. Carrie, will you read the changes, please?
To the policy agenda, we're substituting item four C, resolution granting conditional use for short-term rentals at two thirty-eight A and B and two forty-two A and B Rodenberg Avenue.
Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale. Second by Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Unanimous vote with Glavin and Nathan out of the room. Oh, Nathan is no longer with us. I totally forgot. Totally forgot. Moving on to presentation agenda, mayor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate it. Uh, welcome everyone to this cold Tuesday morning, and uh, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Oh, all right. We don't have any departmental reports, correct?
Correct.
All right, moving on to council reports. We'll start with Mr. Tisdale.
Oh, let's see what I have here. Uh, one of my favorite items, been a couple of months since I asked about the IP parking lot. I know that, I know the parking lot's still there. My question is, are the rocks going anytime soon?
I contacted, uh, Mr. Schwartz, the, uh...
GM.
Yes, GM, yes.
The big guy.
Uh, and, uh, they have a, a plan together. They have a design together for some landscaping and other things that they want to do around it, and we're trying to schedule a meeting with him and the mayor so that we can all talk about that again. I'm basically waiting to hear back from him, but we did talk, uh, last week.
I, I had a meeting with Vincent about two months ago about their general plans, uh, and I think that was, uh, the next step is what you're talking about. Vincent's gonna come with a, a plan to, uh, landscape it.
Well, I heard landsca- I mean, I heard landscaping, but it's supposed to be paved.
Some of it's gonna be paved, but not the entire, you, you know, the, the idea that, uh, I think about two hundred spaces is what was mentioned would be, will be paved, and the rest will be held for some of the heavy events, and, uh, you know, you won't notice that, uh, it's completely unpaved.
So isn't some kind of variance or some sort of action required by the council if we're gonna make an exception under those circumstances?
It would be, but, uh, let's meet with him first and see what he's proposing, and then we'll give us an idea about what needs to be readdressed.
Let, let me give you an update on, on, initially, uh, was it gonna be about a six million dollar addition to the, uh, parking lot when it was, we gave them, and now it's probably jumped to about ten? And, uh, so we're gonna come back with, you know, uh, uh, I guess a suggestion or request, uh, that we need, would come with this revised, revised plan.
When might we expect this meeting to occur?
Uh, put short in the next couple of weeks.
He had asked, he had asked that we just wait until after the holidays, which we have, so I would expect this meeting will probably happen in the next two weeks.
Okay, I'll ask again in the future. Thank you, uh, Jerry. Also, Boomtown's RV Park, they've, it's been there for a while. They're supposed to landscape that, I think. I don't know. I don't think they've done anything. I don't think they've ever done what they said they were going to do there.
Zach is in communication with him. Really what that was supposed to be was just kind of a landscape area around the fence that they put in around there. So, uh, I've had Zach communicating with them about getting that in. I know that he's had a meeting with them. I don't have an update today, but I will get one.
Thank you, Jerry. Um, source of funding for the Sanger Theater. I saw something on WLUX, they're installing chairs and everything over there. I assume those were city employees putting in the chairs?
Right, and reassembling the, the things that had been stored.
Right, is there any other work that's required?
Looking at the, at the paint scheme and then in the restoration of, uh, about thirty feet, uh, from the stage on to, to the back part of the stage, so identifying what needs to be done and who can do it as far as restoration of the, of the, you know, the different, uh, uh, features there.
Right, we don't have any money budgeted for that.
That's some money, but, um, not, you know, not, uh, to do the complete situation.
What's the source of the money that we have currently?
We're working on that source right now.
It's a top-secret source?
No, but I'm not gonna talk about it now.
It's an unnamed source?
That's right.
It's a rich uncle in there.
Well, yeah, let, let me say this. You know, the Friends of the Sanger have some resources that we may be able to bring, some of the, uh, monies that we've kinda squirreled away with the intent to put it in, into the interiors of the Sanger.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, have we res- Chief, if, if I may, Chief, do you know if we've received any tier-one special event applications at this point?
Without having that list in front of me, I know that there has been one for spring break.
All right, so we've had one application for spring break, but any other?
Accurate of, I'm just not sure what else.
Okay, and that's, uh, there's a process involved and a timeline involved, and I, I can see no reason why we wouldn't follow the timeline that's established, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Dimming?
Just, just a, a couple of things. Uh, Ms. Levata, um, I don't need you to come up. If you would just shoot me over the list of projects for, for dredging. I know that in the past, before the Corps of Engineers shut us down for the, for this, uh, subaquatic vegetation, we had some projects that weren't done. We did do some. I wanted to get an update on where those were, the ones that weren't completed, and so I can update my list. Just send it over to me. Um, council, uh, Mr. Mayor, I know we have a special, uh, special session set for after this. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to table it for one week, simply because Kenny did have some questions pertaining to this issue, and unfortunately, with the weather, he's not able to be here. I know also our former councilman Barrett had some, had, uh, some questions that were, were, um, relevant to, to the concerns of, of the people that he knows in the city of Biloxi. I'm gonna talk with him to make sure that his, those concerns are addressed, or that we don't overlook the concerns of certain people that didn't represent those interests to the rest of the council, um, other than that under.
Which one we talking about?
That's after this, we have a special session regarding
Okay.
the, um, recreational vehicles on private property.
All right. Mr. Guines, you got a report?
Uh, yeah, um, I think Paul took care of most of our tour for me, and, um, uh, just, uh, we had a great Martin Luther King holiday. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, we, we finally got to twelve ninety-nine. It was the tenth, you know, the twelfth night, January the sixth. We was a little bit behind, but we did make it, so it turned out pretty good. I wanted to ask Jerry Creel on, uh, the Isaiah LaBia, the Doctor LaBia, you had to separate those, the duplexes. Did, has that been done yet? The meters, both of them, fix the stairs outside, or have they done anything at all?
Oh, no, that's been inspected. Everything's been approved.
Then, uh, they changed, did they separate the meters? Did they have two different boxes?
They were already separated.
No.
They were al- they had two meters on the west side of the house. They were already separated.
Well, you said at the meeting they wasn't.
It's been-
Now, you said they were.
It's been done. We went. I sent the guys out there to check on it, and it had already been separated.
So it's been separated?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Another thing, uh, Paul, we keep talking about the raises and fifteen dollars an hour. Have you put any numbers together at all?
About fifteen dollars an hour. I've been talking about-
Yeah, fifteen dollars an hour, right. No, minimum wage, move to that.
I, I, I don't know what you're talking about, but we're working on raising.
No, I said we've, well, I brought it up to his ear.
Goal, I guess, yeah.
Well, I mean, you, you know, the, the fifteen dollars an hour, I mean, you can't highly hire anybody much less than that. I mean, I just was wondering how it would affect our scale. That's why I keep asking those questions. And roughly, some type of raise for the employees and that, you know? Okay, that's it. Thank you.
All right, and I have no report. We'll move on to pol- uh, public agenda, where we have citizen comments. Each citizen is allowed three minutes each to speak. We have a total time allotted of forty-five minutes. Once you reach the desk, please say your name and address aloud for the record, as well as write it down. Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak?
Okay, Teresa Thompson, um, fifteen oh six Avalon. I'm here to try to get two of these things covered today. It's a little hard, but, uh, the first thing I'm opposed to is a conditional use approval for two existing duplexes to be utilized as short-term rentals on case twenty-three one oh one PC. As with any other conditional use exception, the location must meet all nine conditional use standards to be approved. Standard C says the use of the property must be compatible with the surrounding area. First off, these duplexes were built for low to medium income housing and developed with that purpose. All the duplexes are not purchased. In fact, there's only two of them. If all of these get purchased and changed to short-term, then you have eliminated low-income housing availability in the city, which to me seems to be a problem. Are we trying to create more homeless? What we should be doing is helping these tenants to have a more viable place to live. Since this is only two of the duplexes, how are you gonna get people to short-term in this area? It was documented in the planning commission meeting that this is a high-level crime area. How can you put visitors in this situation? This is an all-or-nothing situation. You can't start short-term renting while people are living there. There are not enough facts to prove that this will work, and the investor will actually complete all these purchases. Also, the city should be finding a viable long-term alternative to, for these tenants in Biloxi before this process is completed. We don't need them on the street. That's not our purpose in life, I don't think. To me, standard C is not met, and I please ask you to vote against this conditional use request. The other one is case number twenty-four zero zero two. It says, "Recording purposes only is a request for a final plat approval to subdivide one piece of RS seven five property on one twenty-seven Everville into two lots, and then combine it with lot one thirty-three, which has not been changed." And I somewhat question how do you, why you have to change it, or why do you have to put it in the subdivision? The LDO twenty-three two four F one says, "The purpose of this subsection is to provide a uniform means for the approval of division of land and provides for the welfare of the present and future inhabitants of the city by one A, providing orderly growth and development of the city." So I can understand the, the reasoning for it. It makes sense, um, but I get confused a little bit on the documentation as I go through it. The LDO, uh, the fact sheet says the director of community development determined the LDO, um, F two, twenty-three two four F two was met. But LDO twenty-three two four F two C two requires a minor subdivision plat approval and an approval of a final plat. This is requesting the final plat. I can't find any documentation anywhere that there was ever a, um, minor division met. Uh, I ask that y'all consider that this not be approved until there's more documentation on exactly what they're gonna do and why they're doing what they're doing. Thank you.
Anyone else on my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak? Anyone on my right, your left? Anyone else? All right, if not, citizen comments are closed. Moving on to the policy agenda, Ms. Carrie.
Orders to approve zoning map amendment for two parcels of land from RS seven five medium-density single-family residential to limited business for two eighty-five and two eighty-nine Rodenberg Avenue.
I'm moving. Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence and a second by Mr. Tisdale. Being a first reading, we'll move on to ordinance B.
Orders to amend the code of ordinances pertaining to no-wake zones.
All right, previously moved by Mr. Tisdale and seconded by Mr. Guines. Any discussion, Mr. Tisdale?
Just wanna be sure I'm accurate on this, Peter. I think we had, um, talked about this and approved this, maybe when I say approved. I think we had done that previously. All we're doing is codifying this, more or less, is, would that be accurate? For these no-wake zones? I remember we had some discussion on it. I thought we had-
Yeah, we've already, we've already recognized this area as a no-wake zone, but I think in looking at some other parts of the code, that we had two separate wake zones that were in the code of ordinances, so to be, make that consistent, we just add, we're adding this to the, to the authorized wake zones.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Miss President. Thank you.
Mr. Guines?
I have none.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous votes brings us to resolution C.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize two existing duplexes as short-term rentals for two thirty-eight A and B and two forty-two A and B Rodenberg Avenue.
Do you have a motion?
I'm moving.
Motion by Mr. Dimming, second by Mr. Guy, uh, Lawrence, sorry. Any discussion, Mr. Dimming? Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I think we really did look at this pretty carefully. These, uh, low and moderate income houses were built probably ten, twelve years ago after Katrina because there was a shortage, and they put these together for low and moderate income families. The problem what we're doing here is turning it into short-term rental. That's gonna eliminate low and moderate income families being involved in that. And I really don't think we're supposed to be putting short-term rentals inside a limited business. That's a stretch. These are supposed to be, was originally businesses until they built those condominiums there, excuse me, duplexes there for the low and moderate income. So I just think the effect of this on this piece of property, since they have several other ones, and I know the original owners, I think, have sold the property from the beginning, but when this was come, came out, we stated that we would keep this low and moderate income family units. So I think we should stand by our word and keep this in effect. I don't think short-term rental is the proper thing to do inside this limited business area. Thank you.
Mr. Dimming?
Yeah, out of curiosity, Jerry, who owns these?
The company that owns it and applied for this is called, uh, Haggos, and I'm not sure if the owners are in the audience today. But what they were proposing is to change two of these. You know, these properties have been a code enforcement problem for a while. You know, the duplexes are on that side. We're constantly getting calls about trash and litter and some other things over there, and Mr. Lawrence is right. It will remove some, uh, permanent housing off the rolls in favor of short-term rental, but, you know, short-term rental is allowed as a conditional use in LB zoning. The council's already voted on making that conditional use. You know, as, the comment was made is that the city hadn't done enough research to see if this would be a success or not, and that's not our role or our responsibility. I mean, people take risk all the time opening businesses. They're expected to do their own research about whether or not it'll work, but I can tell you this, that a lot of the buildings, the substandard buildings that we have in town that have been converted to short-term rental, there have been improvements made to the buildings to make them more attractive. They've replaced the siding, or they've done this or done that, you know, to make it more attractive, because I keep going back to what Mr. Foster said in the very beginning, that when you're in the short-term rental business, you have to keep your game up here, because all it takes is one bad review online, and you're out of business. So you have to keep your standards a lot higher than a, a long-term rental property would be. But, uh, as far as the ownership, I'm not sure if the owners are in the audience today.
Yeah, I, I was, I was, it was more of a rhetorical question. Mr. Lawrence kept using the term "we." Like, we put these there, and we built these, and we, we, we said we'd keep them this. And so I just wanted to, to make sure that this wasn't something that the city did, and the city doesn't have the onus or the control over these properties. These are privately owned by private people, and we don't owe a duty to some ongoing speculative tenant that may or may not be there in the future.
If you, if you remember Tom Easter, Tom Easter was a, a builder developer several years ago. I'm not sure where he is now, but, uh, he actually built these. Not long after I came here, they, they built those along Rodenberg, and they thought that, you know, Rodenberg is a main thoroughfare, you know, it's a, a lot of traffic goes up and down Rodenberg. It's just down the road from the Shell Station and some other things that are, are there, so that was kind of the reasoning behind it.
I'm for it. I support it, and, um, I, I, I guess I could sympathize with future low to mod income renters, but there's plenty of space in the city of Biloxi for any developer to build low to mod developments. Um, that's all I have.
Mr. Guines?
Yeah, um, I don't remember those housing, the, the housing, uh, area being low mod. If I remember correctly, they were for trying to attract airmen off Keesla. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, too.
Pretty sure, 'cause I didn't, I didn't know that.
And I can tell you that they are not a part of the Biloxi housing authority.
No, they're not. They're not. That sunbelt right across the fence in the back area, sunbed belt, which used to be the old pine crests back in the day.
Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, I'm, I, the only thing that makes me a little conflicted about it, I mean, I like the idea because that place, that area needs to be cleaned up very badly. And, uh, this is a step in the right direction, and they're cleaning it up. Uh, the only thing that I would caution is, are they looking at purchasing the other ones? Because if we can get those other ones, then that would give that whole front, uh, um, area to look good. Because I wouldn't wanna, pretty much like she said, I wouldn't wanna put our, our, uh, visitors in harm's way, because I know how that area looks. But short-term rental would be, um, a breath of fresh air and a, and a better look for that area.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yes, a few questions. Uh, we approved, uh, a substitute Yes, sir. uh, item here. Can you tell me what's, what's changed in the substitute resolution as opposed to what the original?
The, the original packet was sent over the week that I was out, and when I came back in and, and looked at the packet, the first three or four pages that were in that packet were actually for the zoning change case and not for the case that you're hearing today. That's all it was.
Gotcha.
There were a few pages that were incorrect.
So noth- nothing of, of relevance in this issue? The other thing is, in attending that planning commission meeting, uh, if I understood correctly, some of these duplexes are privately owned and some are rented?
Well, I think they're all privately owned, and, and just the private owners, you know, rent them out. That's the way that it's been since they were built.
So they're not, okay, so they're not leased or anything? I mean, if, if I bought one of those duplexes or lived in one of those, well, they could be purchased and then leased to somebody, correct?
Yeah, after Tom Easter got them, I think that they were, they were at some point sold, and there are individual property owners that own each one of them. Now, some of them may own more than, than one. Uh, you know, uh, are they sub-lent? We have no way of, of knowing that. But, uh, every one of them that we've had to deal with on a code enforcement issue, it's, it's usually different owners that own each duplex, not, not one unit on the bottom and one unit on the top, but the, the lot and the two units that are on that lot.
Right, um, and, and I remember some of the comments during the planning commission meeting, I think, and, and uh, we're, we're in the nature of, uh, the safety. I, I don't know what the crime record is in that part of the city there along Rodenberg. It's between Rodenberg and Pass Road. I just know for a fact they can't keep the trashcans out of the road.
That's, that's been a part of the code enforcement, uh, issue there, yeah.
And, um, I guess CDBG, when you come to CDBG funding, those funds can only be expended in low to moderate housing, and if there was a low or moderate section in the city, my guess is probably Susan Pickett would know that, 'cause she deals with low mod.
I, I don't, I don't recall CDBG funds being used for that at all. I'm not sure what Mr. Easter used as his funding source. Uh, but when he came in, he had, he had purchased the entire property and came in with the plan to build all of them at the time.
I was on the planning commission at that time, and I remember, that's why I knew that, um, it wasn't a, um, low-mod, uh, purchase. He, he bought it, developed it himself and pushed it out, and like you said, we had a major problem with, um, the trashcans being out there, and it's become pretty much an unsightly area. That's our front door to, one of our front doors to Keesla for space, and you wanna make that more appealing, in my opinion, especially a main road like that.
But, and two, I think a number of the, the problems that we have in that stretch are actually because they're being used as duplex, the people that live in the duplexes, so if someone did come along and buy all of them, I think a lot of the issues that we're having, you know, would, would start to disappear.
It'll go away.
And if I recall accurately, uh, the pur- purchaser, Haggos, I think, they're not local, but their intent, as was stated, was to purchase as many of those other duplexes as possible in order to, um, develop them as short-term rentals. Do I recall that accurately?
I, I don't know. I wasn't at that, uh, I don't believe I was at that meeting. I think that was a meeting.
That's why that meeting went so smoothly. You weren't there.
Probably, yeah.
Okay, but, and I see the, the lady who would, who spoke at the planning commission meeting, I think you would be the property manager? If that's correct, so if you have questions, you might want, I'm sorry, I can't recall your name, but I- Okay, Angie, I don't know if anybody else up here may have questions, but I recall that you were, you were able to answer some of those questions on behalf of the developer.
Thank you so much. I'll do my best.
Sure, but-
Name is Angela Massey. I have a company called All About Cleaning Service. We are a five-star company across the city of Gulfport, uh, Ocean Springs, Waveland. This is some property that we actually helped the owners get set up. We built all the furniture, put everything together, signs, security systems, everything. Um, we do know that Rodenberg is a wonderful stretch of property, and it is right connected with Ninety and Pass Road. There is a lot of riffraff, and we know that if we continue to grow this plan and thoughts of what we wanna do, which is buy as many of these properties as we can for short-term or long-term rentals, um, for the people in the base that don't wanna stay on the base, for people that are vacationing with family. They are all family-friendly Pokemon, Pikachu, different themes like that. Superman, they're Mario Brothers, different themes that they're attracting families to come to the area. We are aware that there is crime scene there, but we are taking every action and precaution to eliminate that by addressing it as it hits when we see it on our cameras. Besides that, just getting those rentals in and getting them started, um, it's gonna be a great thing for our city. I really believe that.
Do you feel like, uh, being up to, about a Rodenberg, that, that would create a big short-term rental for vacationers?
I do think that, because, um, if you're on Ninety, we have the, um, visitor center right there at the end of Rodenberg, where they can take their kids. They have a place to use the restrooms. They got the beaches. Pass Road, um, is another section that they can go to. A little further down on Ninety, we got all the amusement centers. It's a great location. It's a really good area if we can get some of the crimes eliminated. And that's what he's looking at wanting to do, is purchase as many of these from the individuals, turn them into short-term or long-term rentals, and help beautify the city. We've already cleaned up that one area. The other building's not been processed yet. We're still putting it on hold to rectify it and get it reworked, um, putting it up to code, all new floors, all new cabinets, all new countertops. Everything's brand new. Um, but we have a renter in the bottom, and we don't wanna get rid of that renter at this time. We wanna see how the first one does. Um, like you said, it's a gamble, though we've been having like twenty to thirty hits on the property for people wanting to stay at it already. We just letting them know we can't do anything at this time until we finish our process of everything.
Those are three of bedroom.
It is a two-bedroom.
So why did you do it? Why didn't you renovate the whole three bedrooms and not just two?
The owner only had so much money to start working with, because he purchased two buildings and all the stuff that went in it to re- renovating it, getting everything brand new. He wants to just wait and let this one increase some of his profit back, so that we can go ahead and start on the second building as well.
So you own two buildings?
He does have two buildings.
Two of the four.
He's got two forty-seven, and then I think it's two eighty-something, but the other one is being occupied on the bottom floor. There's nobody upstairs yet. We have started working it and getting it ready, but we've not done anything else with it. We wanna get these two first in place. Let them start producing some income so that we can continue working on the other two.
Well, you said that, um, y'all were talking about buying all these. Is you talking about- Well, you said that, um, you were talking about buying all these, is you talking about this guy that don't have any money? He's gonna buy all of these, cause he can't even finish one apartment?
Um, well, what I understand, it's several investors that are looking at doing this.
So, this guy did it by himself to start with?
He has a profit.
Not several investors, there, there's something wrong right there. He did that, but you can't fix up one apartment, and you sure ain't buying anything else.
Um, from what I understand, so I don't know.
So, I know you don't know, cause you just, you work for them.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's a job for you, so, so, yeah, that's a, that's another little problem. And I'm telling you what, that's a long walk from Rodenburg to the beach. People stay at the hotels on the beach, don't wanna walk across Highway Ninety. But that, that's, uh, you know, if you know this town, that's, that's a hustle to think that they're gonna vacation is gonna stay there and walk that far to the beach.
I do handle a company in Biloxi as well, and it's called Grand View Apartments, and they walk every day to that beach from that apartment complex, and it's the same amount of distance.
And where is this one at?
It's called Grand View Apartments, and it's on Ninety, up, right off the beach. All the DH homes just built up by it, I, I clean.
Grand, Grand View sits on the beach?
Yes, sir, but their apartments are way back off the road, and they walk that road every day.
These people leaving them houses, walking all the way down to the beach, you talking about, that's two, that's two different thing. Those people live at Grand View, and that front door is Highway Ninety. So, that's, that's a little different. I just can't, I just, uh, and I'm not, I don't remember anything about these being anything to do with connected to Keesler. Like with, uh, Felix the same, these things were built by Easter for his local income, and they renewed it built, cause that's a Katrina, they had a shortage on the market of low-income and moderate houses, and that's, that's, that's the purpose, and that was the reason it was built. And at that time, we said we'd keep it that way. So, anyway, I think sometime the city should stick to his word and do what they said they're gonna do.
Well, first, I di- I didn't say that it was connected to Keesler.
Well, you said it was built for Knees to Kook and Keesler people.
If I might be allowed to word in edgewise.
The what? What'd you say?
Anyway, as I was saying, it wasn't about Keesler. He built them to attract the airmen, to give it a decent housing. And one of the problems that we have now is the neighbors across the street with the garbage not being put back, they're looking for some relief, and, uh, right now, anything is better than doing nothing. And at least with two of the four being, uh, looked after and kept up, I think those, uh, neighbors across the street will be more than delighted, at least to see the garbage cans put back, uh, on a regular basis. Thank you.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, um, thank you, ma'am. Jerry, think with me just for a moment, as well as anybody else out there. Thinking north, uh, west of Keesler Air Force Base, north of the railroad tracks.
Mm-hmm.
I was trying to think if there are any permitted short-term rentals, west of Keesler, north of the tracks, and is, is going through it, I think there are a couple of short-term rentals that we approved, was approved, that are permitted on McDonald Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
And I think those are the only ones that I can recall in that area. South of the, between the railroad tracks and the bay, basically in west Biloxi, west of Keesler.
That, that sounds correct, and, and you know, as we've said many times, that if you're within walking distance of the beach, that's where short-term rental is the most popular. You know, if they can look out and they can see the water and they can walk down there. Once you get away from the water's edge, short-term rental's just not as popular. You know, uh, there, we do have some, uh, you know, we've got, uh, a couple on Bone Street.
I know we have some in e- east Biloxi, east of Keesler, north of the tracks, and, and they're generally between Division Street and, and the railroad tracks, right in, in that area, scattered throughout based on the conditional uses for around twenty or thirty or limited business or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Um, personally, I think if, if I'm coming to Biloxi and I wanna stay in a short-term rental, and I, I'm an average in terms of discerning where I want to go and maybe learning a little something about the area before I get there, I don't think I would choose this location. And, uh, anybody who's staying there, they might walk to the beach, but it's quite a haul if you're walking to the beach, particularly if you're lugging something. So, I, I can't support this, uh, I just don't think it's a good location, personally. Uh, not so much, I just don't think it's a practical site for that purpose. That's all, thank you.
Next. Mr. Lawrence?
Hi, Larry.
Go ahead.
I, I'm like, um, Paul, I can't support this, and there's a couple of reasons. First off, it's not compatible to that neighborhood at all. And that's something it's supposed to be, it's not. And I think it does affect the low-income and moderate people in, that live in there. So, I mean, we don't need to create any more homeless, that's for sure, I put in my, so I can't support this at all.
Anyone else?
Are there people living there that are gonna be thrown out?
Well, I, I think I heard her say that there's someone living in one of the units, but
Right.
but they're not going to remove them, you know, uh.
Right, but there's nobody that's gonna be made homeless.
No.
Because of this project. That's all I have.
All in favor? Three, um, all against? Three?
Thirty-three.
Moving on to Resolution D.
They have a lack of majority.
Resolution, granted minor subdivision, final plat approval for one-twenty-seven and one-thirty-three Iverville Avenue.
I'm ready.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence. Do I have a second?
Oh, I'll second.
Second by Mr. Guines, go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
Th- this is another one. I've been trying to put all this together since I received this Thursday, and this, to me, is the most confusing thing I think I've ever seen, was just actually subdividing a lot. First of all, I don't know where it come from. Second thing, there's so many things that states it's a subdivision, but yet we have nothing that we're building on it. We have no clue with the insurance. We don't, we're building six duplexes, ten condominiums, we don't have any clue, cause it don't lift. And to do a subdivision, anything you're supposed to have, we're supposed to be built on this property. And none of that states that anywhere.
Okay.
There's no plan, no nothing, we taking one lot and making it two. And then, let me finish, and then all of a sudden, it's sixteen A, seventeen A, eighteen A, and what is that?
Originally, this was four lots, and at some point in the past, it got converted into two lots, and the new owner is wanting to convert it back into three lots. It's zoned single-family residential, there will be no short-term rental on here without a zoning change. They wanna build three single-family houses on this property, and they met the criteria for what's called a minor subdivision, which means that as long as they're not, uh, creating a problem with infrastructure or something like that, and that infrastructure's available, and they're not creating any non-conformities, then it can come directly to the council for minor, minor plat approval, and that's what they've submitted to you today. But it's on RS seven-point-five, single-family houses.
But there was no preliminary lot, there was no preliminary, we'll be, we'll be put there. We have yet to state.
Okay.
They building anything on this property, and you just don't change property.
Well, Mr. Lawrence, if they come in with an application to do anything other than single-family, it's gonna have to go back through the planning commission.
They should be there already, Jerry.
That's the only.
They should, they should say, I'm building three houses, I'm building three duplexes, I don't care.
They can't build duplexes there, because it's not zoned for a duplex.
Excuse, just say three houses.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter.
Three, three single.
Okay, and what did the review or development committee thought of this? Did we change the land thing, did they review this?
It, it, they don't have to review it, all I have to do is review it to see if what they're asking for.
They have to go to the file department, everybody has to look at this, it should go back to, if it didn't, then it should be sent back to the review.
Mr. Lawrence, with all due respect, you don't know what you're talking about. On a minor, on a, uh, minor subdivision application, there's a provision in the LDO that says that if it meets the criteria for size, and it's, they're not creating any non-conformities and utilities are available, all they have to do is do minor, uh, subdivision application, which comes directly to the city council. I reviewed the application, they're not creating any non-conformities, they're not changing the zoning, it's single-family residential development, that's all he can do on the property.
But I thought you were saying you dealt with any kind of land movement, you had to go through the, at least the review committee to look at.
And this, and when this subdivision was originally done, at what point in the past it was done, that's when the preliminary plat and the final plat were done. But all he's doing is coming in and taking this one block of property, these three, the two lots that are on there, and converting them to three, and all of them meet the criteria for RS seven-point-five. So, it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of a no-brainer.
Yeah, it's a no-brainer until it come with the next step.
All right, and again, the only thing he can come in and submit on this is plans to build single-family houses. And if he brings in anything else that is not zoned for, then it would go to the planning commission and come back to the council, it's that simple.
Okay, Mr. Guines?
All right, so now, when I just can't deal with time.
I have nothing.
All right, anyone else? No, all in favor? Yeah, uh, five to one, all against, one. Moving on to E.
Resolution ordering that a special election be held for the office of Ward Seven Councilmember.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guines, second by Mr. Glavine, any discussion, Mr. Guines?
None.
Any discussion, Mr. Glavine?
I have none.
All right, anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous vote brings us to, I, Resolution F.
Resolution appointing Brian Thompson to the Biloxi Planning Commission as Ward Two Representative.
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Guines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine, any discussion, Mr. Guines?
Great guy, I'm ill.
He says he's a great guy, Mr. Glavine?
I have none.
Okay, is Brian here?
No, he's not here.
No, all right.
Question.
Go ahead.
Could, could we get a resume for these appointments or whoever we're appointing? I, I'm sure.
I'll, I'll, I'll get it for you, it's Bunny Thom, he's replacing Bunny Thompson, so the other Thompson's coming in.
Okay, yeah, but I mean, we've had a couple of things where we've made appointments, and if I know him, that's one thing, but I, I don't know everybody. I try, I try, but I just don't know everybody.
Okay, any other discussion?
Brand new, brand new.
All in favor? Unanimous vote, this brings us to the consent agenda, do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Guines, second by Mr. Tisdale. All right, Mr. Glavine, is there any items you'd like to discuss?
I have no items to discuss.
Okay, Mr. Tisdale?
Uh, yes, item H, please. This, um, this deals with Causeway Park and, and a tip, typically, the, um, engineering company, we've gotten to do this kind of work, or who's done a lot of work in this area, a local firm, is Seymour Engineering. Uh, I, I don't know anything about HK dredging, uh, who they are, where they're from. Anyway, and I think we've been pretty satisfied with Seymour, just because we've done a lot of work with them, but if somebody can tell.
I can give you some hints on, on some of the, they've been, uh, this company in, in looking at the equipment and then the business they're doing, I think they may be doing, um, King Combs Park, Ki- Ki- King Combs Pier, as well as a lot of, in man development, some, some pretty decent equipment. They'll handle this specific project a lot better than, uh, uh, and, and of course, the workload too. So, it, it's a recommendation that, that was made from.
Christie, this is, this is for surveying, not for dredging.
Surveying, but yeah.
Right, yeah.
But the equipment that's needed to do this specific thing is, is a little bit different.
Are they lo- are they local?
They're gonna, they're, they're gonna be local.
Well, if they're working in Gulfport, I guess we'd consider them local.
But now, uh, they're working in Houston or.
Houston, okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any other items?
Good job.
Mr. Deming?
Peter D., can you tell me what is the leasehold interest? Just on the just compensation, uh, resolution?
D.
I know it's regarding the, the pop sphere, without the internet and looking things up, it's hard to refresh my memory after reading this six days ago.
B is a doggy. Anyway.
Yeah, it's a good point.
That's the just compensation one. Yeah. Pop sphere extension. Yep.
Yeah, I don't have the exact resolution. I think it's, it's for the pop sphere extension, it's, looks like a, uh, you got?
But I believe it's just a hundred dollar payment to a leaseholder, um, for acquisition of that property.
Okay.
Cause whenever we use federal funds, you know, we have to compensate, if even if it's a rental, we have to compensate even the company that's, whoever's renting it.
Payment to that renter, is what you believe it is?
Yeah. I didn't, I forgot to bring that, I didn't bring that one.
I've got it here, that's what it says, um, there's a prior resolution in twenty-twenty, and that should have been, uh, that may have been part of the appraisal, but that was not paid. So, it's, uh, kind of cleaning up an old resolution to pay a hundred dollars for fair market value for the tenant's leasehold interest.
Okay, where are we at, how much more property do we need to compensate for?
This should be the last one, we've done all of our just compensation, everything, all the property has been acquired. As far as I know, there's no more, there's, there should be no more.
Okay.
This is something that just got overlooked, but everything's been acquired.
Okay, Peter, how did we determine this just compensation, or this, this value? Is it structurally driven, or was it negotiated? Was it, was it imposed by a court order, the, the, the number? I know it's a hundred dollars, and it seems de minimis, and, and even miniscule. I changed it to miniscule for, for Dr. Tisdale's sake.
Uh, that's probably a question for, I mean, Neil Schaefer, I guess negotiated it, and, uh.
Typically, well, who's the property owner on that one?
It, uh.
Typically, they are negotiated, uh, typically, it, we, we usually offer a hundred dollars, and that's generally, it, because if it wasn't one of our right-of-way, I mean, our eminent domain cases, then it would not have been court-ordered or anything. Typically, it's not negotiated, I think they offer a hundred dollars, and they use of the property, or the rental, leaseholder rental person accepts it.
Okay.
I can get you more definite answers, though.
No, 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 it's, it's just the unfair bargaining power that, that the city has versus a renter, but.
I understand.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? You got anything else, Deming? No, Mr. Guines?
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I had, uh, on M and N. I'm bringing up these two here, cause, as you know, Fofo, we've been trying to get the property they damaged fixed. And for some reason or another, we don't have it written in, uh, contract to actually get anything fixed, so if I gotta, uh, hold the money back from Nikke's brothers, stop anything? I mean, we got three people, one of them already sued the company, the other two can't get anything fixed. The Lopez is on, uh, First Street, been fighting this for like seventeen months, and they still haven't fixed it. And it's just a few bricks they gotta put back on the wall.
They have to match.
How do we, I'm asking you the one question real quick.
We'll give you an answer, we had a meeting last, uh, Friday with Nikke's, and we provided a schedule on all of those.
Yes, um, regarding the brickwork that needs to be done on the retaining wall on Myrtle Street, he reaffirmed to the mayor and I that he does have a, uh, a crew that, that does that work, that he would do it before the gentleman retires, he's supposed to retire actually next week. The guy's staying on for another month or so, but, um, Nikke's reaffirmed to the mayor and I that they would get that brickwork done at one-three-four Myrtle Street. But that's been what he's been telling us for a while now.
But I mean, you know, we doing all those repairs, and they're making good money off the repairs, and they damaged the people's property, and they don't fix it, and now you have to sue them, always like this case on Myrtle Street, it's seventeen months, and they haven't done anything. And it's all, yeah, we got somebody gonna do it, yeah, they're gonna do it next month. Okay, we've been listening after seventeen months, and yes, I told you and I told Fofo, and he talked to Nikke's and. And yes, I told you and I told Fofo, and he talked to Nikke's and him at the meeting, but it's still, the last seven months, those, nothing's been done, nothing. And it's not that big a job to fix, well, if those people's property, they damaged. So I don't know, somehow I know we gotta write something different in these contracts to make sure they take care of the people who want to damage their property, and not just wait two years, three years, or whenever we finish the job, that's not right for the citizens of City of Luxy, to be abused like that by the contractor who's making money off these jobs. So if we have to sit down and rewrite something, Walt, the mayor, one of y'all, need to put something together. But it's not right to do that to citizens in the City of Luxy, in this ward, anybody's ward. I mean, that's not right, we're supposed to be taking care of the citizen, not paying it some contractor two tons of money, and he does what he wants to do, when he wants to do it. I mean, that's terrible. And that need to be out there, and we need to look at that seriously. Maybe PDA by could come up with some actually language, I don't know. But that is a sin to think that we've been doing this for the last since Katrina. And I know Felix had a ton of them in his ward, I don't know if it's been fixed yet. And yet, they took their money in, right? It's not right for us to have to put up with that and pay people that much money and then do nothing about it. So I can't vote for them, thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor of the consent agenda? Unanimous? Nope.
I vote.
Okay, unanimous vote, and who's abstaining of anything, or exceptions, I meant?
I'm a no on D isn't Delta.
Dimming is a no on D isn't Delta.
M and N.
M and N for Lawrence, anyone else?
I'll, I'll join Councilman Lawrence on M and N.
And H?
And H for Tisdale? Anything else? And Guines is against M and N as well. Alright, we'll move on to code enforcement.
I, I have a question, Madam President. So if there's three against M and N on the consent agenda, how does that affect?
Doesn't pass.
It fails?
But hell, and it's gonna, and that's problematic.
That's what I want to make sure.
But it is.
You know, here.
It's, uh...
What's that?
Um... It fails, the, the underproven procedure.
Or is a change order, what needs to be...
Mr. Mayor, just a second, um, the, the, um, and excuse me if I'm stepping on your toes, uh, President Newman, the, the M and N would fail based off the votes, right, so three and three, if it fails, um...
It can be...
Prevailing party can recall it, but there's no prevailing party, so who can recall it, everyone?
It could be recalled, uh, I think by either side at this point, since the meeting has not been concluded. Uh, any motion can be reconsidered before the meeting's concluded.
I would like to make a motion to pull M and N off the consent agenda and allow it to stand alone for discussion and voting. Does that cause any issues with the administration if we move M and N to the next meeting? Walt, does that cause, pose a problem?
It doesn't cause a problem for, on my side of the table. It's, the, the change orders are for weather days, that, it's just for weather days.
Right, all we're doing is adding days to the contract, I think it's ten days for each of those.
Well, that's what the change orders, the letters M and N on the, uh, the agenda, that's, it's for weather days.
Let's, we, we gotta pull it, we have to reconsider it, we have to vote to reconsider it, and then...
Need a motion to reconsider, uh, you wanna...
Okay, so I have a motion to reconsider M and N by Mr. Dimming and a second by Mr. Guines?
Discussion?
Discussion, or any further discussion?
Regarding reconsidering it?
I, I, I'd like to chime in a little bit, uh, listen, this is maybe an opportunity to let the, uh, the other parties know that we have some pause with this, I think Councilman Lawrence made some good points. Uh, that's why I asked, you know, is this gonna cause a problem? And, uh, perhaps we should just set it aside for, for the next meeting, give you a chance to let the parties know that we, we have some questions. We do want to try to move forward if we can, and, um, you know, that's what I would ask the council to do. I think that's only fair, I think that sends the right message, we did that before several years ago, and we, we had a positive outcome, and I think that, that may ultimately happen in this case, that's just my two cents.
Yeah, and, and I know how, I know how that feel, Brother George, uh, I know how that feels, um, with the weather days, 'cause we had some concerns with the last contractor when it comes down to weather days. But if we can just move it one more week, and that'll give us enough time to go ahead and, um, get some insight if we need to.
Can you make a motion to table for one week?
We're making a motion to table it for one week?
I'm gonna say one thing, too. This, the whole thing is pretty much like what Kenny was saying, you gotta get their attention, otherwise they ain't gonna do anything. One's trying to kill anybody, trying to take their money away from them, but you affect them, citizens of the City of Luxy. And the only way you can affect them is at their strength, period, otherwise they ain't gonna pay attention to you at all, which obviously they've done for the last eighteen, uh, months, nothing on these people's property, so that's all.
Okay, so we got them...
Get their attention.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Let me, let me bring something to your attention, on N, that's Bouvoir, right? And you're asking for extension?
Yes, sir.
This company is, is how many, two months ahead of schedule on this project, and you're gonna, you know, decline some weather days? Okay, and on, and, and I'll be, th- these things that Councilman Lawrence has brought up, we've been meeting on, with this guy usually every other week on these things. Now, if you wanna, you know, en- encouragement and, and scent, uh, or you wanna do the opposite, de minimis, is that the word you said there? Just a second.
I amended that to miniscule.
Anyway, that's sending a message that I don't think would, uh, uh, when it gets right down to it, in, in the rubber meets the road, that, uh, uh, you know, I wouldn't do it if it were me personally, okay? But you, it, it's your choice, but I'm telling you, that doesn't send a good message, at least on BEA one-two, one and two. They're ahead of schedule now, and, and guess what, they're gonna probably get on schedule, which is gonna affect the wrong way.
Uh, Mr. Guines says he wants to change his vote, so is that too late?
Mr. Mayor, I think you should have led with, uh, they're two months ahead of schedule, that would have helped a lot at the beginning of this conversation. However, um, I think we took the vote already procedurally, um, we have a motion to reconsider, we need to vote on the motion to reconsider. Once we vote on the motion to reconsider, we can then either vote on the reconsidered motion, or we can move to amend it.
Let's vote on a reconsidered motion.
So we have to vote, uh, we have to bring it back, it has to be brought to life, so take a motion to reconsider.
I thought we already did that.
We, no, we, we moved and seconded the motion to reconsider, but we never voted on it.
Okay.
We were having discussion.
So we have a motion to reconsider by Mr. Glavine and a second by Mr. Guines, any discussion? All in favor?
I'd just make a, one response.
There's no discussion yet on this, we have to bring, we have to bring it to life.
Then recall it, you can discuss it.
After we bring it back.
Well, we already did discuss it.
We were discussing the motion to reconsider, that's what we were doing, we had a first and second, we were discussing the motion to reconsider.
All in favor? Five to one. Lawrence?
Now it's back.
Against, now it's back on the table.
And I move to, I move to approve it.
Motion to approve by Mr. Guines? Seconded by me? Any more discussion? All in favor? Four?
I'll vote against it.
All in, all against?
Four to.
Four to.
Okay. It's done.
Hmm? Correct, yes, okay. Code enforcement?
Sir? Give me your report on that. Give the report first? Yeah, give it to me. Uh, if it pleases the council, my boss is asking me to give the money report, Madam President.
We're moving on to routine agenda already?
That's right, come back.
Lawrence?
Alright, my boss is telling me to come back. See you in a sec.
Code enforcement?
Item A on the agenda is Kevin Kirby, one seven seven two Curry Street, that case has been resolved. Item B, Harry J. Nowse Senior, three eighty-three Moran Alley, that case has been resolved. Item C, Leo Barnes Estate, two seven 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 Mission Lane, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone, anyone here to speak on behalf of Leo Barnes Estate at two seven 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 Mission Lane? If not, this case is closed.
Item D, Tha- 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 Ma Don, three fifty-six Oak Street, that case has been resolved. Item E, Reginald Collier, three thirty-seven Fayard Street, that property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Reginald, Reginald Collier?
Is this, this is the case that Felix has been working with, just Collier on?
We, we gave him an extension and nothing's been done, there's still a, a, a washing machine out in the yard and cars with flat tires and those kind of things.
Out of respect for Councilman of Ward Two, let me pull him in here so he can address this.
Sure.
Be the proper thing to do since he's been trying to...
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Tisdale?
Jerry, just a general question, it seems like more of these code enforcement hearings, when they come to us, are being resolved than have been in the past. And I'm assuming that has something to do with community court, I, I know they've kind of changed the way they've been operating, and I, I attended one, one, um, and they meet once a month, and things were rolling along there, so I'm assuming this is making a difference with these.
That, and the fact that we have four code enforcement officers now that each have an assigned area in the city, so we're able to get more attention into those areas and, and get them in, you know, to, to keep more pressure on them to get whatever it is resolved, yes, sir. But the court is working very effectively.
If you would, just pass that on to the folks that work with the community court, they're doing a good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think we just move forward with it.
Alright, being that there no, is no one here for Reginald Collier at three 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 seven, this case is closed. Moving on to routine agenda.
I'm over.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence? Seconded by Mr. Tisdale, any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Do you have any update other than, uh, cannot take care of the citizens, what, what's the latest we got? We have new money coming in?
Yes, sir, last we spoke, past few meetings, uh, Mima and their accounting firm, Horn Group, was working on two separate payments to the city. One was a little over six hundred thousand dollars, and it was being followed by another payment of a little over two million dollars. Well, part of the six hundred thousand dollars was comprised of reimbursement to the city for, uh, what they call forced account, uh, labor by the city. And it's a very cumbersome process for them to validate. So what they decided to do was fall back and give us, take out the forced account labor funding, and give us the funding owed for other items, plus some advance funding. So right now, we have two payments in the system for a total of three point two nine million, and they're in what we call step three. Um, I asked Mima this morning if they would give the approval to get it to step four, once it gets into step four, it usually takes ten to fifteen days to get to the city. So we went from two separate payments of around two point six million, uh, they fell back and decided to take out the item that was holding that payment up, and now we have three point two nine million, uh, potentially come to the city here fairly soon.
So the three point, uh...
Two nine.
Two nine, it totally dipped into six hundred thousand and a two million?
Yes, sir, part of, part of the three point two nine million is comprised of both the six hundred thousand and the two million, but there was, uh, like I said, there was an item in there that the Horn Group was having to reconcile and validate, which is the forced account labor. It's a very, uh, like I said, cumbersome issue to resolve and verify, so they decided to take that piece out, give us the remaining funding, plus some additional advance funding. And so now it's with Mima to approve.
It's amazing we keep up with their money pretty straight, which we did a good job with that coming in pretty consistent. You know, that, that was my biggest problem with the not taking care of citizens of the City of Luxy, you know? I know you should have sent a man message to the construction people, what about the people that live in here? You know, so it works both ways. You gotta remember that part too, Mayor, you're the mayor of City of Luxy.
Boy, we use reporting on, it's, it's our, our plan to stay sixty days ahead and we're sixty days ahead.
I, I thank you, Blair, I'm good, we're good, we, we stay up pretty close with the money, that's, that's a good thing.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Alright, any more discussion on the routine agenda? All in favor? Unanimous vote with Guines out of the room? Mm-hmm, do we have a motion to adjourn? Or recess?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Glavine, seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Meeting recessed, five-minute break for our next special meeting. Unanimous vote?
Who's hungry?
All right, you're hungry, but you get the home return.
No, since, yeah. Home, it's home return. The men of us. Literally and figuratively.
All right, we got a special meeting. Being that there is no change to the agenda, do we have a motion to accept the agenda?
I'm moved.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Unanimous votes? Oh, really? All right. Um, going on to our presentation agenda, mayor's report?
No report.
No report. Department of General Reports or none?
Mayor.
No. Counsel report. Mr. Lawrence? Nothing? Mr. Deming? Mr. Tisdale?
Nothing.
Mr. Glavin?
I have nothing.
And I have nothing. Moving on to citizen comments. We have a total time of 45 minutes allotted, three minutes each. Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to come up and speak? Anyone on my right, your left? If not, citizen comments are closed. Moving on to policy agenda, Ms. Carey.
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance pertaining to recreational vehicle parks and also an ordinance to amend the land development ordinance pertaining to storage or parking of heavy equipment, trailers, major recreational equipment, or mobile homes.
And as I take it, this is not going to be voted on. This is for discussion purposes, correct? So who would like to go?
I'll go.
All right.
If I remember correctly, I think we were, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't always remember correctly, but I'm thinking we were just trying to determine who would pay how much and what they would get, I guess, for that. And, um, my thinking is really there are three variables. Uh, one is because you've got a property owner who's going to permit somebody to manage this property for him or her for an event. And whoever that manager is, is going to charge folks to park their RVs on this property. So I, I'm thinking that A, the size of the parcel is going to determine how many RVs slots they can have based on the square footage that in this ordinance would say you have to allot for each recreational vehicle. Correct, Jerry?
The person who is in charge of the property, um, could actually come in with a design for, I mean, this is what the expectation is, that they would come in with a design for how they want to organize the RVs on there. And then what we would do is the DRC body is look to make sure that whatever they're doing complies with this, if this gets approved.
Right.
That there are at least 750 square feet per space and that they're at least eight feet apart and that they're not, uh, set up in the setbacks on the property, those kind of things. So we would just review it, just like we do any other project.
Right.
We would review it in comparison to the ordinance. And if it meets the ordinance, uh, and they meet all the other criteria, then it, it would be approved.
And based on that, you'd, the calculations would be for a parcel this size, you could have, based on the diagram, the DRC, they may have two or three or six available RV slots, we'll call them.
That's correct.
Possibly parked on that parcel.
Yes, sir.
So my thinking is based on the number of those spots per parcel or slots per parcel and the length of stay for whatever event it is, a two-day event, a 10-day event, and then a daily rate, whatever that might be. For example, if you had a parcel and, uh, it goes to DRC and I'm managing that parcel, I can show you that I can fit 30 RVs on this property. And the DRC, yes, says, yes, it complies with the ordinance, once approved. Then, uh, depending on the, that event, let's say it's for Mardi Gras, three days. Let's say I can get eight slots on there. So that's eight slots, eight RVs for three days. Then what am I, what am I going to charge for each slot to that person who's managing the property? Now, what's proposed, I think, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, what, what's proposed out there? I think it's an arbitrary figure just for discussion sake, was $40 basically per day, per RV.
That's right.
All right. And, and I'm thinking, what I would suggest is that we, uh, count the number of slots or available parking spots for RVs, times the number of days, times the daily rate of five bucks. That's all, just five bucks. So for example, if I had a parcel and I could put 30 RVs on it and it met the ordinance requirements and it's going to be for, say, Cruising the Coast for eight days. So that's 30 slots, eight days. That's $240, times $5 for each slot per day. That'd be 1,200 bucks to, that would be charged or you'd expect to receive payment from whoever's managing that property. That way, we're only dealing with one person. We're not dealing with RV owners. We don't have to deal with stickers or anything. That's basically it. Now whoever's managing that property, if they want to eat that cost, they can. If they want to pass that on to RVs who come to park on that property, whatever they charge, we don't know what they charge for the RVs. But that's, I'm, I'm thinking, that's where I am right now.
Okay.
If, if that makes sense. So it's just the number of slots, number of days, and whatever the daily rate is that we would require.
It does. And then we, we do charge the $250 vendor fee at the beginning for the.
That, I heard that from the last meeting. That was really left over. I don't, I don't think that would apply to this, the 250.
Okay. So there would be, there would be no vendor fee. So basically.
That's not a vendor.
Number of slots, number of days, whatever the daily rate is that we, we would expect that person to pay for this permit. Then they would receive a permit for that parcel, for that event. That makes sense? That's all I have. I'll just throw that out there.
And let me, let me just, I'll follow up from the last meeting, which I unable to attend. But yeah, we heard the, uh, the $40 a day being too much. And, uh, so what, what we prepared and have before you is just really a modified version for discussion. It does not really try to calculate the entire lot and come up with a larger number. It's just that the person comes in, he could have a maximum density of, say, 30 on the lot. But you let the property owner make the decision when he does his application, how many RV spots does he want on that piece of property? I mean, some people do, would probably like to have a lot. Some people may just want to have one or two.
That's right.
And so they apply for that number of spots. And then we had it, uh, I guess, for discussion, uh, $15 per space per night. Also, Councilman Deming raised an issue of what if it's not accepted? Do they get their money back? So we cleaned that up to state upon approval of the application, they would pay the application fee of 15 per space per night. So you may have a large piece of property, but they just wanted, uh, two or three RVs on it. And so, uh, they would pay a much lower rate that way of, say, 30 for the, for the property if they had two RVs as opposed to, you know, the capacity could really raise those fees up. And it might encourage people to try to recover that money by packing as many people as possible. So it's just different ways to look at it.
Cruising the Coast, this last time, is the first time that we ever had as many as 30 RVs on one piece of property. Uh, I mean, we, we've never had anything that really even came close to that before. But we did have one, one that had, you know, somewhere between 25 and 30 on it this past, uh, past time. Overall, there were, I believe the number was 720 total RVs at Cruising the Coast last year.
So let me clarify a few things. One, we are not charging a vendor fee or a property owner fee of $200 or whatever that amount is. We're not doing that during these special events?
No, that, that was sort of done last time. It fit, to fit it under some category. But based on this, we're adding a separate category just for special event. And that's the other thing. This rental could only occur during a tier-one special event.
That's right.
Not just for anything else.
Got you.
Otherwise, we'd have people every weekend, so.
All right. Secondly, for discussion purposes, we've reduced the amount that was originally $40. Right now, for just, uh, discussion purposes, we're, we're talking about 15 per spot that's anticipated on being rented. When they fill out the application, they say, I'm going to rent two. What happens if they rent six? Is that subject to code enforcement or somebody checking on that property if they see six RVs and they get cited? For the six, how, how does that violation work?
I think we tell them, and I think you were going to have stickers of some sort to say who's authorized or not. We tell them, you know, if you think you're going to have six, have six. If somebody says, I'm only going to have two, and they immediately come out and have six? I mean, that's something that's going to have to be dealt with ongoing. Hey, we're people honest. You know, at this point, I'd say we trust people to do the right thing.
But, but the collection or the, the initial permit, the, is going to be prepaid by that owner and what they anticipate. And then they would pass those fees if they choose along to the people that are using the property. Correct?
Right.
And we're not trying to collect from the individual RVs that are going to be parked on the property.
No, that's right.
Okay. All right. I just want to clarify that. I think we're moving in the right direction. I think the 15 is getting in the realm of what's reasonable and fair for this. And it allows, when we get these permits, law enforcement can identify what areas are having some activity that if they feel that they need to monitor, you know what they expect and what those vacant lots are being used for. So that's it.
Go ahead, Mr. Tisdale.
Let George go and I'll follow George.
Just like what Kenny said, you got, say you do four or five and you wind up at the last weekend, seven to eight. Well, he's not going to monitor. And everybody works on the weekend. So who's responsibility and where does the penalty if they are caught? And they have an extra three, say, RVs on the land, say, the last weekend, not the whole week, because it's nine days. You know, they, they want to be there Friday, Saturday, the last couple of big days. And they go from four, five to seven, eight or whatever. So who, who monitors that? The police department? Because there has, here's nobody to do that. You know, there ain't nobody that works on the weekend anyway.
Well, I mean, that sort of event, people are there the whole week or even, and when you get towards the weekend, if you have an area that's, uh, I don't know that everybody would come in just on Saturday. I mean, most of the people in Biloxi are.
A lot come in on the weekend for the last big event.
Yeah.
And they might come in that Friday night and Saturday night. That's when all activity. So nobody, who's minded? The police department going to do it? The fire department going to do it? He has no personnel to do that. But what do we do? And if they are caught with an extra three or four, is there a penalty? Or you have to remove them? Where would you go from there?
We wouldn't remove them. I think we would document it and we would just deal with it. Uh, yeah, it'd be a, it'd be like a code enforcement type violation. And, and even somebody could just go by and take a picture, like you had two RVs authorized here and today there's seven of them. We just get a picture of it and we deal with it.
I was going to say, who's going to do that? Going around taking pictures? Starting that first weekend, all the way through the week to the, the last weekend is big Thursday and Friday, Saturday, whatever you want to call it. Because Sunday, a lot of them leave. So really, you can't really count Sunday. Excuse me. So it all go back to the police department? There's another job they got to do. You can't do anything. You.
Violation or a citation, you know, for whatever happened. But I assume that what would happen is that when they. But I assume that what would happen is that when they pay the fee, and they say that they're gonna have six RVs on the property, we would issue them six permits that they could distribute to the people that are gonna be on there. And if our people go out there and determine that, well, wait a minute, there's only six permits, and there's two that don't have a permit, then the only mechanism that I have is to use notice of violation or citation, that's, that's it.
So the fee's gonna be six, ten dollars, say, or fifteen dollars per RV plus six or seven? How many do you have on a lot? Per day? And then no other fees to that?
All right, fifteen per space per day.
No, I'm just saying, I think fifteen's a little pushy, but, I mean, you know, you want people coming to City of Biloxi. You don't wanna run them out, you don't wanna penalize them, you don't wanna keep taxing them. They'll leave, they'll go somewhere else. I don't think that this city is that strong, that they're gonna keep all, we're gonna charge everybody to come to City of Biloxi, 'cause they have an event here. You're gonna run people out of this city.
I can tell you.
And those people spend money, whether you believe it or not.
Okay, I will, I will tell you this. I talked to a RV park owner, um, that told me that they opened up a two-phase park. And when they opened up the first phase park, they talked about what they were gonna charge for that one week of Cruisin' the Coast. And they charged eighteen hundred dollars, and they said that they filled up every space that they had with no questions asked, that people actually paid that to stay there for the full week. Two years later, they added an additional twenty-two spaces to the park, and they went up to twenty-seven fifty, and they said they still filled it up, and that no one even, even raised a question or a concern about the price. Now, you know, those are, th- those are parks, those are established.
That's somebody's business, that's totally a different deal.
This is something where somebody has private property, but, uh, but, I mean, in relation to the fees that are being paid, uh, you know, certainly fifteen dollars sounds, to me, sounds very reasonable. Especially if they're not having to pay a, a vendor fee to go along with that, so...
But other parks are set up to serve those things. And they allow and give more than somebody with an empty lot.
And they have amenities, they have amenities in the park.
That's two different words, and that's their business. That's what they do every day.
Yes, sir.
We're talking about somebody renting the beachfront property for a week, basically. So, I mean, you just, you gotta be careful, to me, I think you're stepping on the wrong thing here. You know, why, why are we doing this since it never had a problem before, other than we packed the City of Biloxi? So why we have to charge now? And in particular reason? And I don't wanna hit the three hundred and twelve thousand dollars for the police department, the InterCity of Biloxi. That's part of our dues. How much money would make up that three hundred and twelve? Fifteen million, eighteen million? That's like an expense, that's all. So I don't see what we accomplished in here, other than affecting the people that actually owns the property. I can...
And I'm listening to all this, and it, it can get messy when you are saying, okay, you, you can put thirty or forty RVs, and, but you come in and you say, I'm only gonna do two. And they end up doing twenty, you know, or something like that. Uh, perhaps, and this, this is a workshop, we look at the capacity of that property. So if they can put thirty RVs on it, and to calculate the fee, we just say, we're gonna charge you thirty percent of the capacity of your property. And then come up with a number, whether it's ten, whether it's five, whether it's, you know, whatever, fifteen. And then they pay that fee, and we go home, we, it doesn't require anybody to go inspect and say, did you put two RVs on it? The fee is thirty percent of the capacity. If you, if you fill it up a hundred percent of the capacity, good. That money that we didn't collect, or we could've collected theoretically, they're gonna spend it in the market anyway. They're gonna go spend it in our restaurants, and casinos, or, or some, somewhere. So I don't think we need to really worry about that. I think the main thing is to charge something that's reasonable for our, you know, whatever expenses we incur during these special events. Identify these parcels that are going to have business activity, so law enforcement knows what the density may be. And, um, and then have a great event, everybody comes here and enjoys it, and they don't have to be looking over their shoulder saying, oh, man, I rented a couple, four extra RVs for nine days, or whatever, should've, would've, could've. You know, we need to find a way to simplify this thing. And I would propose that we look at that, look at the capacity, charge a percentage of that capacity, and then call it a day. That's, that's it.
Any other discussion?
I, I think that's, I mean, that's certainly doable, I think. And I could, I could do another draft of thirty percent capacity, five bucks a night, something like that.
Okay, so we, we're talking about variations of the same thing, it's almost how finely do you wanna split this air? But, um, because I, I see Mr. Glavine's point. Suppose I have a large lot, I just wanna put two RVs there, that's all I wanna do. I could have up to twenty RVs, but I only want two. So in, in the permit application, based on what you said, Jerry, I'm gonna basically draw up a simple site, a site plan that shows my parcel, two RVs, one here, one here, take it to DRC, that's good. They take it over to you once DRC approves it, and whatever the formula is, that's what we're gonna charge them for the permit. Okay? On the other hand, I could have thirty slots there, okay? Fill out the site plan, where they're gonna be located, satisfies, I'm gonna pay a chunk more. And what Kenny's saying is, depending on how many slots you say you're gonna, you have on your property for RVs, take thirty percent of that figure. Okay, all right, good, good, even better. So, so if you did that, if you got thirty slots, we're gonna charge you for nine. You can have up to thirty, may make a little money, you may not, if you can't get at least nine there. Nine times how many days? Ten days, times fifteen bucks would be whatever, or five, or whatever it is. Uh, so that's the number of possible slots, right? Okay, all right, that makes sense.
I have a question, Jerry. I know these things, uh, say, to use that thirty, and then the guy wants thirty, put on the lot, it's thirty. These things are self-sustainable, they don't need anything, they're not connected to anything. So then you come with this plan, they gotta be so far apart. Why? They're not connected like a RV park. I mean, you're talking about an empty lot with a bunch of trailers on it, they could put a file from anywhere. And it's not like that drive through a road or anything like that, you're talking about a lot sitting on the beach, and if I have the department can get there in a hot beat, and no matter where, it's in front, the back, the side, they can reach in anything, 'cause nothing's that big or deep. I mean, I don't know why if everybody has a lot that holds thirty, it, why they wouldn't put thirty in it, I don't know. Other than they charging too much money for them or something like that. I, I, and I don't doubt that they don't receive well for the RVs sitting there. I mean, that's, that's up to the person that owns the land, you know, that's up to him, ain't taking care of that. And that goes back to the insurance and everything else. So I don't know if we ever figured out, they have to have insurance, have to have what? So, I mean, I don't know.
Has been approved by the police department, by the, the city. Uh, only after that will we issue individual permits to vendors. So, uh, I think that, uh, helps, that helps us get the promoter in here to actually talk to us. You know, we got calls last week, uh, from people wanting to set up vendor trailers, and we told them, no, we're not gonna issue any until the city approves the actual event. And then once that event is approved, then we'll start issuing them.
You're talking about spring break, though.
Talking about any, any event, any...
And you don't have that kind of...
Major event.
Spring break, they have them all around the Coliseum.
Uh-huh.
You don't have that kind of thing with, 'cause these people with the RV, they cooking and eating themselves. They're not buying from the hamburger, the little food trucks and that. And, you know, 'cause you've all, we've all been to those things, you eat quite well at those things. So I'm just saying, it's a, that's a different game.
Yeah, these are the ones that are not locating on the, uh, Coliseum property. These are the ones that are wanting to locate on property on Highway ninety.
Right.
And so, once, once the police department, like John said, they're reviewing the application for spring break right now. And once that we're informed that that event has been approved, then after that, and only after that, will we issue individual vendor licenses to.
See, that's another problem, either the, the, like, spring break, that event itself. I mean, I thought they were selling little whiskey bottles, marijuana snowballs. I mean, you have to be pretty much on top of that every hour or so, what they doing and selling. You know, most people make hamburger fine, they would, they would sell anything but hamburger.
Yes, sir.
You know, so, and you know that. I don't know how you control that. Chief Miller's out there with them, I don't know how you control that.
Any other discussion?
Let me discuss a little with Mr. Glavine, to be sure I understand something here.
Peter, so, we were on track to allowing the, the property owner to determine how many spaces he wants to use and pay that amount. But now we're on a path to multiplying a total allowance amount by a percentage regardless of what the person's gonna use? For, I, I must, I suck on...
I mean, it's, oh, yeah, that, it's workshop talk, I mean, it's...
Workshop talk.
We just said that is another, that is another way to calculate things.
Good, good enough for me, good enough for me.
It, it, well, maybe three, three, so...
The, the problem is that the approach, that, the two, the two problems you have with the approaches, right? One, each problem, each approach has a problem. The approach that I would like to see, that the property owner gets to pick and choose how many spots to use, has the problem of policing, right? How do you know if they only use two, so we have that problem, is policing. The other problem is math, right? If you do thirty percent of, of, of two slots, they're not even paying for one slot. If you do thirty percent of four slots, you're paying for one point two slots. So you have a math issue, right? Who gets the benefit? Does the city get the benefit, or do we, or do we just do it by a, a prorated amount of slot percentage? So I'm saying, there's, there's problems with every approach, two different approaches, workshop talk, I'll be at that.
Well, the second way, I think, and it was, uh, what's the total capacity allowed? You have thirty percent, uh, there's some calculations involved, but then there's really no enforcement after that. They just pay, they just pay for that number of spots. If they use them, fine, if they don't use them, uh, and that's why I'd say more like five dollars might be a better number, because you allow for some waste if somebody's like, okay, well, I'm, I'm just gonna fill half of them.
Well, I agree, that's why I said there's a problem with each one, and the policing is the problem with, with trusting people, right? You have to believe that they're gonna do what they say they're gonna do. So you have a policing problem, 'cause you have to police them to make sure they actually do, if you care enough. Um, and then the other side is, is just the math, right? Find, find a reasonable amount of money to make them pay for not using something, right? I mean, that's really what it would be, what it, what it would boil down to for those that don't wanna use a lot. Of course, it's a windfall for the people that have thirty spots and only have to pay for, for nine, right? I think that, that's a, a windfall for a certain group, but it's a burden for other groups. And I think he said there was only one spot that had a, a large amount, a, a large capacity of trailers. So I think the windfall is for that one person, but it might be a burden for more people than it is for the one person that has a windfall. But, again, workshop talk, I'm done.
And, uh, Mike just reminded me of one more thing that I probably should've mentioned about the, the vendors, too. That, um, is it, whenever somebody comes in to get a permit or a sub-event license or whatever, it has to be something that is under the umbrella of the tier-one event. In other words, we have to make sure that when the promoter comes in, he tells us about all the sub-events that are gonna be involved. And that way, John can, and the fire department can distribute their manpower the right way, uh, for those events. And if someone comes in, like we had before, that is not tied to the event, but wants to do something to take advantage of the crowd that's coming down, those events would be shut down.
No, I don't, that's not totally clear, I don't think.
Well, the, the, the ordinance, ordinance says that if it is an unpermitted event, that the police department has the right to shut it down. I mean, that's what... Well, let's, let's go back to last year. We had the, uh, the spring break event here, and we had the lady up in Wool Market that had the event that she was advertising as part of the spring break event. They did not have any tie to the spring break event, all they were doing was taking advantage of...
Jerry, we, we, it's already coming up, like, Mardi Gras coming up next week. There's people that are setting up having things during Mardi Gras that are not connected with Gulf Coast Carnival, so, I mean...
Okay.
I, I think, and it's something we're talking about, during a, once it becomes a tier-one event, we will, we will accept applications for certain vendors that, that may not be directly connected, but they still have to have some, some connection with the event in theory, kinda like...
Well, I mean, anytime we, anytime we have something, I mean, in, in my job, I'm limited to the language in the ordinance, I mean, as far as what I did. So, uh, it, it, you know, it sounds like some decisions haven't been made yet, we'll, we'll go with whatever is...
There, there is something, it could be, it, it is a little vague when that question came to me, but I, I perceived it as you perceive it. But it could be read by the permitting official the way Jerry read it, so I don't fault him for taking that position.
Peter, just, just that... Peter, what is, what is the value of a tier-one permit if it doesn't cover other events that are clearly going on during the same timeframe?
Well, I don't know what, what you're asking, but what, what, uh, i- is Mardi Gras a tier-one event?
Yes.
Do we have other people that get permits to do ancillary things related to, or even unrelated? Could there be a, a, a school event somewhere else? Street vendors would be connected, but unconnected, what if I had a family reunion at a, at a, somewhere that's not being used for Mardi Gras? I don't think you would say, no, you're not allowed to have that, because it's not related to Mardi Gras. I think we would look at the capacity, and the city's ability to provide the services that's needed, and make that determination. So I think there's value in, in tier-one when it comes to, how does, how does the promoter present the idea to the city? And what are the, what are the needs of the city to fulfill that, that promoter's event, right? I think that's what the tier-one is for, I don't think it's, if there's a tier-one, it's meant in Biloxi, nobody else can do anything, leave now, or forever hold your peace. I, put a whole bunch of metaphors together to make some...
The committee, but the committee is like the gatekeeper, if you had too many different people trying to do ancillary events, they still can come in and say, we're shutting down ancillary events.
I, I agree, and that's what I'm saying, I think this, I think that's the city's thing, I don't think simply because there's a tier-one event that nobody else has an opportunity, I think it would come to the committee's ability to say, can we provide resources? Does this overburden the city's ability to provide resources?
And that's what I got up to tell you, yeah, absolutely, that's what it will come down to. Uh, certainly if somebody's having an event, a tier-one event, and, and they're promoting their event, and then there's other, other groups that come in and promote off of that, that's clear that you're gonna have to get consent from the promoter if you're gonna promote this this way, right? But no matter, no matter what, once we've reached the point where we know that our manpower, and not just with the police department, but the fire department, and, and any of our resources, once we've reached the point where...
and, and any of our resources, once we've reached the point where those resources are expended, they're expended. And so something like a, a wedding or something, that's really not gonna, really not gonna draw on, on the resources. So I wouldn't see saying no to a wedding. But I could see saying no to other events, like the one in Wool Market, that start promoting that we're gonna have this event. Well, we, we don't have the manpower to control that.
Right.
And a lot of it has to do with geographical areas. If, if you've got something out west, you've got a huge event out west, a huge event in the east, and a huge event up north, there's no way we can control all those. So at some point, we would have to say, you know, the event itself is established, and here's what the event is, and there, if you're gonna have your event, you're gonna have to do it on another weekend or something like that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, that's the appropriate response. I don't think there should be a bright line. I think it's, it's a lot of gray area that's gonna come down to the evaluation by you and the committee of whether we can support that or not.
Right. Uh, one other thing, I just wanted to back up for a second, just, just to give you this. Uh, you were talking about the renting of, of lots on the beach, so the, and just so, just for your information, I don't know if you know this is the way usually it works or not, but a lot owner, uh, usually gets a call from somebody who wants to rent the lot. And, you know, we wanna rent the lot, so much of the time, uh, there's one or two or three people that rent the whole lot. And some of those lots go for as much as ten thousand dollars for the weekend. So I just wanted to throw that out there. It's not like, you know, the, usually the lot owner, usually, now it may after this, but the lot owners usually not think, well, I'm gonna put four or five RVs. It's, somebody calls them, they wanna rent the whole thing, and then they tell the lot owner how many RVs they're bringing. That's kinda the way it usually works. Not a hundred percent, but I just thought that might give you a little better idea of how that usually is.
A question, chief. On, uh, Neptune has a Saturday night parade, and Tuesday is Mardi Gras. That's two different events, or you count that as one event?
No, that, that, that's two different events, and both of those events, by the way, uh, already had their paperwork in from last year. So they're grandfathered in this year. Uh, that's why there's only one, that's why I said earlier, there's only one, uh, one tier uh, permit that's in right now.
And it's like Neptune, you know, is a great, great Saturday night parade for the city. A lot of people hang around all these trailers and everything until Tuesday for the next parade. They here to watch Neptune, the Stalkwood. But then they actually hanging around for Tuesday for the all-day parade, so I don't know how you handle those, uh, which you count, or even like the food vendors. They, you know, they're gonna hang around for the whole weekend. How you, you, you said Neptune is strictly one event by itself.
That's an event.
So that, is that listed as a tier-one, not two?
Right. It is a tier-one, but like I said, they didn't have to get it approved this year, but that's something we'll have to, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't think we're gonna go back. I mean, we can ask our attorney, but I don't think we're gonna go and, and, and tell the vendors, if they come get a permit, Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, if they get a permit, they've probably got the permit for the week. I don't think we're gonna go back and try to double-charge them to have a permit for Neptune and a permit, you know, for, for Gulf Coast Carnival. But those two groups are separate.
Well, I know Neptune's Saturday, and they usually fill up Friday, so how do you handle all, not the food places, just the people walking their trailers and trucks and everything all over the place? Are we gonna charge them for anything, or they just, how's that work? For the city itself, not private property now, and most of these things up and down the roads everywhere. So what do we do with that?
Yeah, and what Jerry just says, we're not charging them anything right now, and that's something we'll have to look at. This, this is the first year of this, and it was already, they were already established, you know? We already knew they were coming, they already had their paperwork in, so I, we really can't, I don't think we can hold them to something, uh, to some regulations that.
Even on RVs, it wouldn't, we, it wouldn't be in time anyway on RVs to charge during Mardi Gras.
No, I was just wondering, I mean, you know, and to tell you the truth, I think if, this'll be the first time we charge them for anything, Peter, I would've thought you oughta start at ten dollars, and then you can work your way up. To me, I think you oughta start low, and then if you wanna add it, if it keeps on coming, like Jerry said, and load it in, load it in, then fine, go to fifteen, go to twenty. It's not gonna matter. But I think you oughta, you'll come in, the first charge should be ten dollars a unit to Stalkwood, something like that.
So chief, what do you, what is the relationship, what is the relationship between the, the group that wants to rent a, a lot and charge for parking for spring break, and the, the guy that you've permitted as the tier-one permit? Are they related at all?
Well, at this point, at this point, that has not, that has not, uh, that has not come up. He has, if I'm, if I remember correctly, the events that, that the promoter right now that has his paperwork in for spring break are on the beach. He wants to promote stuff on the beach.
On the sand beach?
On the sand beach. And so I'm sure there's gonna be some, some, uh, some lots that, that he wants to, to approve for parking that someone else may rent, but that, and that'll be between them. They'll have to, he'll have to get the permission to do that, and they'll have to go to Jerry and get the permission for the individual lots. And, and if, if the enforcement action that, that you were talking about earlier, not to back up or not to confuse you, but while it's on my mind, uh, yeah, it's, it's gonna be a handful, but probably what, what we, the way we'll start this off is I'll probably have a couple of civilians, and their job will be, that already work for us, their job will be, so I'm not using a sworn officer, we'll get a list of lots, just like we do vendors now from Jerry's office, and we'll get on that list that'll tell us how many RVs should be parked on a particular lot. The civilian will ride by and count the RVs, and if everything's in compliance, they're moving on. If it's not, they'll make a call to their supervisor, and an officer will go out, and, and this is just the way I visualize it. An officer will go out and say, you know, we have you approved for, for four RVs, but you've got six, and let them explain it. And then there's no action we're gonna take at that point, rather than to turn that over to Jerry after the event, that it was supposed to be four here, we documented it was six on here. As far as I'm concerned, it goes to community court if it has to. I, I would think that we just make a call to the, the property owner and say, hey, you had this, and the guy's probably, or the gal's probably gonna say, yeah, I had a couple more people show up, I didn't wanna turn them away. You know, the capacity of my lot is this much, and I know how much spacing I have to have between them, uh, so we went ahead and accepted them, and, uh, you know, I'll pay those fees. That, that's what I expect's gonna happen. I don't think we're gonna have a lot of cheating, as long as people know that we're there watching. Now, maybe, it may be, may be much more involved than that, I don't know, but they're, right now, that's, that's the way I see it. We're not gonna go out and have a big dispute about somebody because they have more RVs on their lot than they're supposed to.
And what we're talking about here, you had mentioned parking. We're not talking RVs, we're talking just automobiles, right?
Right.
Okay, we, we didn't even look at that.
So, so, when, when our promoter tells us that he, I wanna have these events on the beach, part of that discussion is, well, where are you gonna park at? So all that'll have to be explained at that same time, and if he wants to rent a lot to park on, or if he wants to allow some, some sub-promoter to rent that lot, you know, under his, under his authority, that, that's fine with us.
And if it happens on the beach, the Sand Beach Authority and the county's involved in some manner, correct?
They are, they are. So there, there will be a, a meeting coming up shortly, uh, to discuss that, and it'll.
Every month, right?
Well, it, well, for this particular event, so it'll include us, uh, the Harrison County Sheriff's Department. Uh, you know, we hope the Coliseum comes, the Sand Beach Authority, and anybody else that we can think of that might play a role, need to be at the table with the promoter, and let's lay everything out.
Peter, Peter, do you have enough, based on this discussion, did you get enough guidance to kinda have a rough draft here for us to uh, mull over and ponder?
Yeah, some pondering, yeah. I mean, I.
We can always mull and ponder.
I'll do version A, B, and C.
Attaboy.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
No, you can't do that.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. All in favor? Unanimous vote. Meeting adjourned.
Outstanding.